I call to order the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Mr. Messer, please lead us in the flesh. Mr. Guston, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lundberg?
Here.
Ms. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
Thank you. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and the business meeting October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Almost there second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we're at the item on the agenda for committee reports. I'm going to ask committee members, since we have quite an extensive agenda, if you could please do your report in five minutes. And yes, I am timing you. Okay, I told you I was. Ms. Bolton, please present October twenty-one budget finance and growth meeting.
Thank you very much. Well, first made the topic we have discussion about, I think last month, and indeed that has been concluded. It was a meeting to change some aspects of the ESO agreement. We did that with legal counsel, outside legal counsel. Then also, the treasurer presented to us her budget update as to process change. As you all recall, we discussed it for almost a year now, evolving into a new budget process. That's outlined for you on page three of the minutes. And she always brings up the Susan Bunce I C example, is trying to explain it, but the important dates are on page four, where it says what she's going to be involved with the process at what time. Then also, we talked briefly about the growth speed regarding moving of assets to CPS. And the topic in this particular week, this particular month, was really talking about where our schools may be under-enrolled, or were we not using all of the square footage of the building? And so that's ongoing, to try to evaluate that. Because it's been long to talk about growth, if indeed we're not doing the job we have, what kind of adjustments do we need to make? Some of the places that look like are under-enrolled, might be under-enrolled because the special age classes are kind of taking more space than some of the other classes, and also in a number of our schools, we also have school-based health centers, and some health services and other kind of non-instructional, but full-service kinds of activities that are happening. The financial pieces are here, as we're monthly reported and outlined for you. And we did start this past month to have the treasurer's office point out maybe five or six highlights that might be particularly interesting to us, or might be relevant to some of the discussions. We continued to have a discussion about how much the charter and non-CPS schools and students are costing us, and the fact that charter students on an individual basis get more money than our CPS kids. We continue to show the evolution of our grants, how many there are, for what cost, and how they're being spent, and maintaining a time left unstable for each. We also saw reports back from the CRA, Community Investment Areas, and I think this accused is getting back to us, and has gotten back to us in a memo regarding what she found out about the city and the CRA. Also, what we've already talked about before is the idea of maybe having a study and survey to figure out what is possible about transporting seventh and eighth graders on yellow bus, and if the pilot would involve Froder and Clark. Thank you. So that's a pilot, but the survey will take place before a final decision is made. We also talked some more about some of the possibilities regarding transportation. There does seem to be an interest as Sorda slash Metro has not really shown any particular interest in returning to the extra routes. There is some interest, and I think expressed by all board members, I mean, all committee members, that as we do a new RFP for transportation for the following year, we start to think a little bit more out of the box, and start to see if there's a way that we ourselves might be able to deliver services. And then finally, as we all know, the dot maps, or the proper maps that we have, it's been suggested to administration that we'd like to see those maps pertain also to this year, rather than the previous year, also finding out how many of the dots, the students that are depicted are actual staff members' kids that are going there, or they are special needs kids that are there because their unit is there. And we felt that we would need to know that in order to really figure out not only the under-enrollment, over-enrollment, or more particularly, figure out what we're really talking about, about magnets and neighborhood schools, and what that will impact on transportation for us.
Thank you. Okay, do board members have questions or comments on that report? Okay, Ms. Bates, please present Health and Safety Committee meeting report.
Yes, thank you. The recurring agenda item was discussed, which is the report of our governmental liaison on particular and immediate legislative topics, and that was presented by George Glover and Eric Kearney, our governmental liaisons. We also had a presentation by Jessica Shelley, who's the Director of Food Service here in our district, on the Good Food Purchasing Annual Findings. And that was very, very in-depth and very informative. And what we wanted to do is get this information out to the public about, especially about our Good Food Purchasing Program, which is an initiative to purchase from local farmers, and Ohio farmers. So this committee recommended that at the upcoming meeting with Senator Blessing at Campbell High School, that this presentation be made available to him as well, and urge him to sponsor legislation on the Good Food Purchasing Program so that it becomes statewide with some financial incentives that are attached. There are twelve or thirteen other states that are doing the same thing to encourage buying, purchasing from local farmers, instead of, you know, out of the country, or California, for instance, very, very large farms. So we keep our local farmers and smaller farmers in business. And we had a report on our implementation of the sexual abuse discrimination and harassment prevention policy. And we also had our report on our discipline, and that is pretty well outlined in the minutes. So please take a look at the minutes for the data regarding discipline, and generally showing reductions in discipline measures. And an update on the COVID-19 pandemic. So I urge the board and members of the public to review these minutes for the whole report. So I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the report? Alrighty. Thank you. Ms. Bolton, please present the audit committee meeting report.
Thank you. Yes, the largest issue that was discussed is a proposal regarding succession of the chairmanship and the length of term for the chairmanship of audit. The vice chair presented a plan, and the committee discussed it, and we're going to continue to discuss it in the next meeting as well. And it's a detailed effort about how long the chair will serve, and how long the vice chair might serve, and about paralleling the terms. So that's going to be discussed again. No decision was made. And they did ask the Finance Committee to review that possibility of their proposal, and see if the Finance Committee and the board, which would have to approve of it, had any other alternatives or thoughts about succession and the chairmanship of the Audit Committee, our Community Audit Committee. We continued to have a presentation once again on the benefits efforts, benefits audit, and that discussion was somewhat suspended by the chair. And then we moved on to developing the internal audit strategy. In that, the Audit Committee members expressed an interest in being a little bit more involved with some of that, particularly in the risk management, and that more and more options be presented perhaps for them to select, or better guide our wonderful internal audit person. And then another item which we've all talked about before is that it was requested by the administration that the internal auditor person, Ms. Roberts, be able to kind of review the charter for the workforce, preschool workforce development committee, because some of the discussion has been, we're not sure what they're supposed to be doing, what they are not supposed to be doing, and who's doing what. So she's in the process of that. And then the Policy Committee, Board Policy Committee, asked the internal auditor to also start to review or develop a plan as to how we measure the implementation and the rigor of the enforcement and implementation of policies, our board policies of equity and excellence in education, anti-racism, parent and family engagement in federal programs, purchasing of goods and services. And she'll be, has already reported back to the Policy Committee, and has a plan for doing that. The treasurer then submitted just more data and more documents that are attached in the back, and we were happy to have Mr. Kevin Ashley, Director of Financial Reporting, update us, and those are items that were already appeared in the Finance Committee. And then there are, I don't know, twenty-some pages of appendices that verify and substantiate the material that was presented at the Audit Committee. And again, we are thrilled to be able to have a Community Audit Committee full of experts that serve as sort of our outside advisors. I submit the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Do board members have questions and comments about the report? Thank you. Mr. Murawski, please present Policy and Equity Committee report.
Thank you, President Jones. The Policy and Equity Committee met on Thursday, October twenty-eighth, at nine a.m. We had a very jam-packed meeting, so I will make my way through this as quickly as possible. The first bulk of the two pages are about the proposed student vaccine requirement. So, you know, in lieu of recounting all of that, I can wait till board matters. But at the end of the day, the punchline is, I think, you have three committee members that run three different points on the spectrum, which I think caused for a really good, you know, discussion. You had one, me squarely in favor, Eve, who had a lot of reservations, that gave me a ton to think about these past few weeks, we could talk about later. So thank you for that. And then Ben, somewhere in the middle, I think. So I won't go into all of this. I will just say that we did have a good discussion. We asked at that time that the Communications Department Administrator surveyed to families, which we have not as of yet done. Of course, with the faculty in co-located Part One, we surveyed a lot of folks. And so anxious to see the results of that regarding this proposed new policy. Related to COVID-19, and just in brief, this board is well aware that there was some confusion among families regarding quarantine policies. Our quarantine policies regarding, say, if there's twenty kids in a classroom, they're with the same kids all day, teacher contracts COVID-19, the kids don't exhibit symptoms, they don't have to, or don't have COVID, they don't have to go home, right? We're not sending children home because we want them to be in school. There were a number of cases enough that it brought up the need to talk about in Policy Committee that there were outside folks with whom we worked, that say, come into the same kids, same classroom, say they're at one of our community partners, have COVID, kids test negative, same exact situation, but not our employee, we were sending kids home. You know, we were following guidance of Cincinnati Health Department, which we are happy to do because they are experts. And after some digging and looking, it turns out that we could implement our policy and not send kids home. The punchline is, kids don't have to go home if they don't have COVID. So that was a good discussion. It's long in the minutes, you can read up on all the reasoning there, but that's a good thing, I believe. I heard enough concern from this board about that confusion, that it seems like a positive thing. Attendance boundary lines and enrollment policies, Ms. Bolton talked somewhat about this from her committee reports. Committee member Bolton reported the district's been evaluating for a number of years how the district is organized. She also stated discussion has been about enrollment and the boundary lines. General Counsel Hoying updated us on our own policy, fifty-one twenty, which is regarding enrollment in neighborhood schools, and our preschool and enrollment magnet policy, and our high school, school of choice enrollment program. Ms. Bolton advised administration to look at neighborhoods and report back on the legal process of redrawing boundary lines. Of course, with the Clifton area neighborhood school, I think everyone's aware, the experiment there that seemed to have panned out was that it's drawn on actual neighborhood lines. I don't pretend to speak for Ms. Bolton, I'm not that stupid, but I do think, you know, a lot of this is born out of the fact we have these sort of gerrymandered neighborhood lines, you have kids, you know, living in College Hill that are driving across town instead of going to Pleasantville, and like, what would it look like to reimagine the district? Again, Ms. Bolton has talked about the Center of Finance minutes, so it will not beat a dead horse. I expressed my desire to make sure neighborhood schools are diverse and reflect the neighborhoods they're in. You've heard me talk a lot about it, some of these meetings, that we're never going to program racism or implicit bias out of, you know, white folks in urban areas where the schools are prominently black. And if they want to live in those areas, I think we need to approach going into the living rooms, getting families excited about their neighborhood school, this is why Hayes Porter is a good place, why Rhode Humber is, I just feel the need to constantly say this. And then also, I brought up my longstanding desire to get rid of open enrollment. So it's in the minutes, and maybe we can talk about that again someday. We discussed a lot of district organization. We got a great packet that sort of outlines the way the district is organized. This was born out of our last Policy Committee meeting, when Ms. Bolton had suggested that it should be updated to include the operational side of the districts. But also, I think, if I may editorially, it's a good thing for the new superintendent to have decide what is the operational structure of the district. And so we looked at that, and Committee Member Lindy expressed concern about how much time it might take for someone's work to restructure this document, to like a one-sheet sort of easy, here's the, here's the thing. Ms. Bolton and myself stated the document is time-sensitive and would be beneficial for the search. Mr. Lindy advised an extended timeline to revamp the document, which I think everybody was, made sense. And I'm wrapping up, wrapping up. You already addressed our Chief Audit Executive, Lauren Roberts, outlined a great strategy. You'll note we have revised policy minutes for this section only. The high-level stuff here is that the process is, one, does management have written procedures that address the board policies that Ms. Bolton already outlined? And again, goods and services, parent engagement, federal programs, equity, anti-racism. If so, does management's procedures support each significant aspect of the policy? Part two, is there evidence showing the procedures have been implemented? If so, are the procedures providing the intended results? Committee Member Lindy reported he's interested in how evidence would be collected to determine if they've been implemented, and would prefer a small number of items in a randomized study. Committee Member Bolton informed, I think this is Jermaine, informed the committee that the Audit Committee, I think initially, might have some concerns, like, why are we doing this? But came around, and we are to give credit, I think, to our Chief Audit Executive, Ms. Roberts, for that. Bolton, thank you. And then continued review of policies, all of which are in front of you tonight to vote on. I hope you enjoy them and pass them, and I present these minutes as written.
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments about the report? Okay. Mr. Lindy, please present November third's Committee of the Whole Meeting Report.
Thank you, President Jones. The Committee of the Whole met on November third, and had, I think, two really important presentations. One was about changes to the state report card, and how CPS is doing. I lied, three presentations. Part of that was about enrollment. And then the last piece that I want to share here is an update on transportation, specifically Metro and the elimination of the extra routes. I won't go through all of this, because I think the minutes do a nice job of explaining everything, but there are some significant changes to the state report card, most notably the change from receiving a letter grade to A through F, to receiving a star rating. And it's unclear at this point in time exactly how the star rating is going to be calculated, but that will be a big difference, I think, for everybody. And then I think, you know, as we look at some of the data that the administration shared, it felt like there were two important punchlines. One was, you can see the impact of some of the things that the district and the city have been trying over the last five years. We looked at some of the early literacy scores, and you can see how kids starting in CPS today are doing significantly better than they were doing a year, two, three years ago, and how that could very well be the impact of efforts like the Cincinnati Preschool Promise, and the hard work of all the teachers and staff at Cincinnati Public Schools, and preschools and kindergartens across the city. And that's good news. I think the thing that is also true, and was very clear in the data that we shared, is how much work we have to do. That was already the case, and is particularly the case after the pandemic and the last two years that I think we've had together. So there's more to read in the report, if you'd like. I think we heard an update on enrollment, and we saw, I think, because of COVID, a little over a three percent reduction in enrollment, and that about point-six-two percent has come back this year. So overall, still down from before COVID, but moving up in the second school year. If I'm wrong on any of this, I'm trusting someone to correct me. And then on Metro, I wanted to try to spend just a minute on this. I think, you know, I found this part of the meeting to be just incredibly interesting, really important, and frankly, fairly distressing. It seems as though we have not received from Sorda significant parts of data requests that we have received in the past. Specifically, we haven't received comparative ridership data to really understand how different is the student experience this year from past years. So I just want to commend the administration for what they shared at that meeting. We've collected a bunch of our own data. We've surveyed principals, and I think the numbers are pretty striking. More than half said students, or around half of principals are saying that kids are not on time to school. Eighty-two percent said the times are worse this year than previous year. Seventy-three percent said there are more parent complaints than previous years, and seventy-three percent said the wait time for Metro buses on the way home is worse than in previous. We also learned that we have found, as I understand it, almost eight thousand Metro bus passes that are not being used. So that's a fifty-two percent reduction from last year, in terms of how many students are actually using the Metro. And the only thing that's changed is the elimination of the extra routes. So that comes out to almost a two-and-a-half million dollar reimbursement that we've requested from Sorda. And that, I think the piece that I took away from this is that the current state is just, it's not good. We have lots of evidence that it's not good. We continue to receive a posture from Sorda that they're not changing things, and do not seem interested in changing things. And I want to commend our administration for, I think, collecting hard numbers on this, filing a public records request so that we can get the information that we've been asking for, and I think not letting off the gas on trying to create a better situation for kids and families, because I do think the situation they've put us in seems to be a distressing one. So there's more in the report. Thank you for listening, and I present the committee report as written.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the report? Okay, the final report, committee report. Ms. Bowers, please present the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee meeting.
Thank you, President Jones. The Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee met on November fifth. We had a presenter, Mr. Matthew Jellin. He is the Executive Artistic Director, CEO of the American Legacy Theater. He presented to us information about the theater with the ideal of collaboration on an extensive level. In two thousand twenty-two, there will be a Phase One pilot, January twenty-second through May twenty-two, January two thousand twenty-two through May two thousand twenty-two. He is already providing some of those services and after-schooling in our district, and he's working with Dr. Rudnick around his pilot. The action item from this discussion was, Committee Member Bolton had requested data to see which schools are already having artistic programs in school, after school, and as a part of summer scholars. We also had Ms. Emily Campbell present on accelerated learning, and we had Miss Stacy Hill send us a report on the keys to Edison's success around the learning of their school and success of Edison Academy. We also had, the action item from that discussion was, administration was to provide an update on the assessment of, at the end of this school year, of this year, meaning in December, around the assessments, the two-week cycle assessments. Another action item from Committee Member Bolton was, administration was to research why Edison is under-enrolled. I think she mentioned some of that in her financial report about the under-enrolled schools, and why that was. We also had Dr. Rudnick present on Fine Arts. An action item from that was, administration was to provide an inventory of the arts program offered at the schools within the district. Mr. Harden updated the committee from the Athletic Department around elementary school athletics, junior high and high school athletics. He also identified the schools that were running, had a state tournament run in football, as well as cross-country. He talked about the triple-A pathway, and one of the key things that I thought was important for me was that he talked about the beyond-the-field mental health conversation that happened over the last week regarding our students being involved and coaches being involved, and understanding the importance of mental health in athletics. We had a Vision Two Thousand Twenty update from administration, identifying if we are practicing true, authentic, two thousand twenty school vision, does the schools have everything they need. There was a request from Committee Member Bolton about identifying, and she referenced also in her committee, her Finance Committee, about magnet schools, monastery schools, neighborhood schools. And there was a comment about Aiken being branded correctly. Additional business was, our committee discussed being true to the language in the superintendent's ninety-day, or year contract in her ninety-day qualitative review for superintendent, or interim superintendent Amman. And so what we agreed upon was that Mrs. Lindy would follow up with a collaboration with interim superintendent Amman about measurable outcome, and report back to the committee after sharing with us on December third about what those outcomes might be, which we presented to the full board during executive session. We also had two members from hearing of the public, Ms. Kendra Phelps and Ms. Julie Sellers, CFT president. These are the stack minutes, and I present them as written.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about stack minutes? Okay, I need a motion to approve the committee report. Some of second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Amman, please introduce this evening's presentation.
Yes, it is a great pleasure to introduce the principal, Renee Corford, of Bon Hill Academy, for our CPS is Bright School Highlight. Good evening. Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Thank you to our interim superintendent, Tiana Amma, for giving me this opportunity to highlight Bon Hill Academy. I am the principal of Bon Hill Academy. My name is Renee Crawford, and I'm just going to highlight some good things that are taking place at our school. You can go to the next slide, please. So Bon Hill Academy, students, faculty, and community partners collaborate to investigate the wonders and possibilities of math and science. Our school is an elementary school. We serve students in grades pre-K through 6th grade. Students are prepared in our school to pursue careers in math and science. So when we were going through picking pictures for our slideshow, I felt that these pictures would be very appropriate because what it shows is that we are working on grade-level instruction that takes place in many ways. So you see the use of interactive whiteboard where students in grade 6 are working on coordinate planes because that is one of their standards for math. You also see a group of students working on fractions, using manipulatives. And what you see in that right-hand corner is one way that we are analyzing data with our students collaboratively on our temperature checks, which are our two-week assessments that take place. So the stars that you see show how the students, how many of them are at those levels. So when we first started out, a lot of students were at the bottom of the thermometer. But as you can see, more students are reaching mastery as we continue to do our two-week assessments, which are also known as temperature checks, because it gives our students the opportunity to be instructed with on-level on-level instruction on a daily basis so they're not remediated on a daily basis. And so you'll see that as they go up, you normally have three temperature checks that are in a unit of instruction. So as we're covering a multiple standard, on the first temperature check, you'll notice that the scores are low because they haven't covered all of the standards that are introduced to them at that time. So when you get to the second temperature check, because it's a big picture, you'll see the score start to go up even more because more of the instruction has been covered. By the third temperature check, you should see the most growth or mastery in that particular unit of instruction. So that's how we prepare our students for these careers in math and science, by making sure that we are not remediating our students but giving them what they deserve, which is on-level instruction. Next slide, please. Moving on into academics, which kind of overlapped what we just covered, but some of the advantages that I like to highlight, and I'm not going to go through this whole slide. You can read it on your own, is that we have our full-time STEM teachers, and we have two STEM labs at our school. One that's more focused toward primary, and the other is focused toward intermediate students. We have small class sizes for our students to get that individualized instruction. And one of the things that has been very helpful for us is our Tower House partnership because we know that a lot of our students have come in with a lot of things taking place in their lives, from COVID, from being displaced because we have a lot of Project Connect students. So it's very important for us to have partnerships with our mental health agencies that not only help us with the students, but also gives teachers PDs like on trauma-informed care. And this year, we are working on restorative practices for our disciplinary issues that we see in our building. Next slide, please. We have a lot of partners. And one thing that I was kind of worried about is when COVID hit, that we would lose a lot of our partners. Well, we didn't. It just changed how we had to communicate with them. So while we deal with our partners, we had, during our time of being out for COVID, we still had our meetings, but they were virtual. But now that we have our partners back in the building, we've already had our monthly meeting. And the things that we've discussed is that we've moved from just what do the students need to actually give them the opportunity to present our one plan with our partners so that they can see how they can connect to the academics of our building. So now we are trying to move back slowly into having some of our partners in the building to give our students not only mentorship-type of relationships, but also to give them some of the academic help that they may need so that we can use our partners to help close the gap while our teachers are continuing to teach on-grade-level instruction. Next slide, please. Our Vision 2020 update. Can keep moving. And I'm going to turn it over to my instructional coach, Mr. Christopher Anderson, and he's going to cover the next slide.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Thank you, guys, for having us here this evening. Those of you who have not met me, my name is Chris Anderson. I'm an instructional coach with Kansas County ESC. And part of my job is to produce and host a couple of video series that I want to tell you guys about and how we're integrating that into the classrooms of Bon Hill. So the first video series is called Science Around Cincy. It's a web-based series that features scientists and engineers in our city, in Cincinnati, as a teaching tool. These videos teach science concepts. We sit in middle school, we, between like 3rd and 6th grade, but can be scaled up to 7 through 9 as well. What we try to do is we try to make the science relevant to the kid's life. Things that kids can see, they can connect around town, and that is really important for us. So what we've been able to do is we've been able to provide a hands-on STEM experience for the students at Bon Hill. So what happens is we have the videos that teach a science concept. It's linked directly to the instructional materials that are paired with that video, which is also linked to the standards. So it's a seamless integration for teachers. Every single video that we produce is standards-based, so it is a teaching tool for our teachers. And it's been really impactful. We've been able to take some data from our work here at Bon Hill. Over 50% of the students increased their interest in STEM careers and, more importantly, increased their interest in learning science, which is really, really great. We've also been able to get some funding through Planty Ohio and OCEAR grants that provided us the opportunity to print thousands of textbooks, and we were able to get a workbook for every 4th, 5th, and 6th grader at Bon Hill. There's about 120 pages of discussion guides and labs, modeling activities that all go with the videos that we produce. If you can go to the next slide, please. The second series is called Outside of Classroom. It's similar to Science Around Cincy, except we've expanded it to the national parks. What we do is we've gone out to national parks, and we filmed there, and we use that to teach students science. And it's been really great. We've been able to pilot some things in class. The kids have really, really responded to all the activities and the videos. We're exposing the students to our public lands, many of whom may not have visited them, let alone maybe even heard of them. We were also able to adopt a classroom, and this was really great. This previous spring, when we were out filming out west, we were able to adopt a 5th-grade classroom. And it was really cool. Actually, if you can go back to the previous slide. The kids here in this picture, they're doing an activity with mammoth cake. And what they're doing is they're learning about different processes that break down and move rock. They're learning about erosion, they're learning about weathering. And so they had to watch this mammoth cake video, and I had done this activity with the students and our teacher. And shortly after that, I was leading to go film in, out west in the national parks, film five parks. And what we did is the kids were already asking questions, and we decided to say, hey, let's adopt this classroom. So they would send videos of questions to us while we were on the road, and we'd answer them while we were in the parks. And the crazy thing is that the questions got better. It was like an iterative process. The few times we were able to connect, you know, of course, at the end of the year, at the end of May, we were able to connect with the kids, and they really got excited. And it's been really great to see just the growth and the interest that the students have gotten in science and in the parks and in conservation. You know, anecdotally, when I walked through the hall of the kids, the kids say, are you coming in? Are we doing science day with you? You know, they're asking like, oh, I subscribe to your channel. Like, oh, I was watching the science videos. Like, they're getting really excited, and that's really great. So I just want to thank Ms. Crawford for all her support. She's a fantastic principal. And I also want to thank Liz Wolfe. She's the science curriculum manager, and she's been very supportive of all her work as well. And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We can go to the next slide. Extracurricular activities. And that's our last slide. Next slide. So some of the neat programs and activities that we've been doing at our school. So one of the things that we took advantage of was the month of October. And so we called it Think Pink Thursday for the whole month of October. And to bring about the awareness of breast cancer awareness, on Thursdays, all of the staff and all of the students would wear pink in honor of those, even staff members at our job, who are battling cancer or kids who have made, who have known, or kids who have known people to have lost the battle or are going through the battle. So we tried to bring in something that they may be able to relate to because we're a uniformed school. So on Thursdays, everybody was in the color pink. And we called it Think Pink Thursday. And so on the announcements, we would have a thoughtful Thursday, and I would always give them something motivational to think about others, more so than what we were thinking about ourselves on that day. Another neat program that we had is GE brought a field trip to us back in September. So they come into the building on a Saturday from like 12 to 2, and they work with our 6th grade students. And they worked with the students on creating a vacuum chamber and creating a website through COVID. So instead of us being able to go to them because some of the things are limited to the locations where we can visit, they brought the field trip to us, which was very exciting. One of the pictures that you see on here that I like to highlight is that bottom-right picture. And that's our gym teacher. And so this was the first year that he did cross-country team for our students, extracurricular activities. And so it was so exciting to know that the young lady on the left-hand side, she came in 19 out of 40. And the young man on the right-hand side, he placed number 6 out of 40. So being able to tap into some of the skills and some of the talents that the students have that they've not been able to do over the last year and a half. So that was very exciting to see some of the students who wouldn't ordinarily participate in extracurricular activities to really get out there and have fun with. So I leave you to say that I am a proud principal of Bon Hill Academy where our vision is stimulating young minds, one student at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll open up the floor for questions or comments. Mr. Messer, Mr. Morosky, and Ms. Bowers.
Thank you. And you can't help but to be excited listening to you. I think that you kind of casually walked up, and then you just came to life. And that just got me excited, and I know that must get people in your building excited, of course, your students. Mr. Anderson, good to see. Old friend over here at CPS. You know, and I love all the extracurricular activities. I don't think we can do enough. So I just love the variety and how you're building that in. I was curious, was it maybe two years now? There was a charter school that opened its doors in Bon Hill. What impact has that had on your school and enrollment, et cetera? And what are you also hearing in the community?
So I'm not hearing much about the school. I have had some families to come and enroll their children at our school coming from here. So I have had that to happen over the course of this year with parents saying how dissatisfied they were with the school. And they have come to enroll their children in our school. I won't say that that school has had much impact on our enrollment. Our enrollment did take a dive down when COVID hit because we were, had a lot of parents who were very anxious about whether or not they should send their students in person. And so on a pre-COVID year, we were hitting the enrollment about 340 to 330 to 340. So that was a normal number for our school. So when COVID hit and we were competing against charter schools who were bringing their kids in five days a week when we were listening to the safety of our students through CDC versus trying to fill seats, we took a dive downward, and I think the lowest that we hit was 254. But since we've come back in five days a week and the kids have more of a structure and a continuum, not back and forth, but are able to actually come to school, we've been going upward since then. And right now, we're sitting about 288 to 290. So we're not where I would want us to be. We're not where we were during COVID, and this is not where we would stay. I know that we will continue to go up. And I don't think the impact of where our numbers went down had anything to do with the charter school. I think it had more to do with what the parents were feeling as far as, is it really safe for my children to go to school? Because we experienced some deaths with some of our students losing grandpas and grandmas, and some of their parents even having COVID. So the anxiety level went up. But I think they're trusting us more because now we're back in five days a week, whereas some of the charter schools never stopped coming in five days a week. Now we're back in five days a week. So we're seeing our numbers go up. They're not where we want them to be, but I'm sure that they will go up even more.
Thank you, President Jones. I just had a comment, but now I have a question thanks to Mr. Messer's question. And so from where we sit, which is a different place in a whole lot of ways than where y'all are sitting, good to see you, Principal, good to see you, Chris. It would appear that we are doing a good job, safety-wise. And so how do you feel? How do you feel? And then I have my comment, but how do you feel things are going? Are the safety protocols good? I mean, have put people's fears kind of at bay a little bit?
So I think that parents have become more trusting. I never let up off of the safety protocol. It is a part of my daily attendance, a part of my daily announcements that I do every morning. I give them words of encouragement, and I also remind them of why we are able to be in a building five days a week. I'm very strict on wearing the mask, covering the mouth and the nose, the three feet of distance, keeping your hands clean. And I make it a part of the announcement so it's instilled in the kids. I had a parent come in one day, and she said, if we got vaccinated, why do we have to wear the mask? I said, because we have to protect all of the children through that door that has not been vaccinated, nor do they have a choice at this moment. And so I don't let down. I have some parents who, a handful who didn't believe in COVID. And I told them, you know, you have a right to how you believe, but the way we're going to run our school is based upon CDC recommendations. And so if you want to come in, this is just the way we're going to do it. And so not putting down anybody's belief system, but allowing them to understand why we do what we do at our school, it makes them more accepting to the choices that have to be made. We haven't had a big influx of COVID cases. I only saw where numbers started going up right after Labor Day. We have not been seeing that here lately. So I feel safe. I would send my child to the school that I work at. The safety protocols are in place. I'm not annoyed by them. I told my staff, yes, we would like for students to come in with masks. But if they come in without, they made it to school, we'll provide them with one. So I'm very strict on those protocols that we have in place. And it makes a more comfortable, safe, and healthy environment for our students.
I appreciate your vigilance and diligence, helping us keep our doors open. So thank you for that. And also, I just want to say, I had the opportunity to come to your school a couple of years ago to visit Bonz Union, LULAS program.
Yeah.
And I just want to say, you know, been to a lot of our schools, like I think all of us have. It's remarkable. You know, I walked away from that day, and now you presented here, and I heard a lot of saying it said much more eloquently, confidently. But the cohesion between the teachers and the math classes and what the partners were doing during the school day was most impressive. And if I may be so bold, and my educational experiences are increasing. And I know that Superintendent signed a letter of support for Bonz Union for a grant from the Department of Ed, which is really cool. So I just kudos to bringing it everyone. And then again, the cohesion between the two, it's a big deal. So a lot different than the days of pulling kids out of class to go tutor somewhere. It's a mystery, but like doing it together, so.
And we were able to still do that during COVID. We just did it in a different way. Now you get on a computer, they get on a computer. Now you get on a computer, they get on a computer, but it never stopped.
Thank you, Ms. Fowers. Yes, thank you, Ms. Crawford and Mr. Anderson. This was a wonderful presentation. I was glad that you provided a visual. I'm a visual learner. I'm glad you provided a visual about the importance and explanation of the progress of the two-week cycle assessment. That was good for me to see because I know that that's important to all of us, the board members, to see some of that progress. Vision 2020, as I mentioned in my report, was something that our staff committee was concerned about in committee member vote and wanted to make sure we were being authentic or who was being authentic. I applaud you for explaining that you guys are being authentic in your vision 2020 focus. And I preferably, or what stuck out most to me was preparing students for careers in math and science. We are so focused on the CTE in the high school. I just love hearing it rolled back to elementary that you're providing those stepping stones early. So thank you for that. And if you could answer one question, either one of you, that you see surgical nurses? Can you explain what they do when they come? Because I was fascinated that that's probably a hands-on kind of interaction that you have. Could you explain more about that collaboration?
So we have a group of nurses that come to do a lot of screenings for our students. So we're partnered in that way where they come, they do the vision screening, they do the hearing screening. And so they were with us maybe about a month ago. And it was very interesting because it was one of those days, we worship our staff. And so I was telling the kids, for safety purposes, we're going to have an end day because it's safety first. We can take them into the cafeteria. They love trivia, do a trivia contest, give them incentives. So the nurses heard this. So they come to the office and they say, we'll help you cover the lunch. We've all been BCI, FCI background checked. We can go on the playground and help you so that the kids can have recess. So is, they come in to do those type of screenings and offer us to be able to bring the kids to get dental work done and things like that and get glasses and things like that. However, it's bigger than that because they heard just on my announcement that we're going to have to reroute for the safety of our children. And them thinking about our children was like, no, we're going to pitch you and we got enough nurses. We're going to pitch you in and help them out so that they can still get recess for their day. So they come in for one thing, but the partnership is there.
That's very important. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton and Mr. Lindy.
Yes, not a question, but glad to see the use of the effort by the National Park System. Glad to see you reaching beyond the walls of the school. Glad to see you using sources out there. It certainly is very much true to the Vision 2020, but also the CPS outside initiative by so many of our community groups. So I think that's wonderful. So I appreciate that effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
I truly just wanted to say thank you, I think, for all of your enthusiasm, for the wonderful merging of, I think, academic rigor, joy and real-life application in kids' lives. And just say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Did a lot of that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to our board matters. As you might note, the board matters agenda item was moved up on the agenda and that was intentional. We have a very special presentation under board matters. And I'm going to ask Mr. Lindy or Ms. Bolton to sort of introduce the first presentation under board matters.
Thank you, President Jones. I'll be quick so we can give most of our time to our guests. But one of, I think, the most important thing that our board is working on at the moment is the search for the next superintendent for Cincinnati Public Schools. And community engagement has been just a crucial part of this effort from the very beginning. So much so that before we even created the job description, we wanted a process that would engage community stakeholders to understand what we should be looking for in our next leader. So we're going to hear from Monica Santana Rosen from the Alma Advisory Group about that process and where we are in our search process. And I will turn it over to Monica.
Good evening, everyone. Am I coming across clearly?
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. And I believe maybe Rob can put out the slides that I have here to share with you this evening. Thank you so much. And Ben, thank you so much for that introduction. We can actually move to the next slide. Every time I meet with the board to discuss the superintendent's search, we always begin by thinking about our shared purpose. And the board has established the shared purpose of recruiting, screening and selecting the next superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools. What's really important is that the board has a stated purpose to lead a transparent search process with integrity, guided by the input, not just of the board, but of the greater Cincinnati community and designed to mitigate bias every step of the way. What's important about this is that from the beginning of this process, it was important to the board to listen to the voices of the community. And not just to, in a traditional process, have big town halls where the person who has the microphone has the opportunity to speak, but to really engage in authentic dialogue and conversation in small roundtable conversations and really have people tell us their stories, share their experiences with us. So it's been really wonderful to have the opportunity to get to speak with as many people as we've had the opportunity to speak with and hear from as many people as we have. And tonight, we are here to share a little bit, as much as we can, about what we've learned and how that information is informing our process. We can move to the next slide. I wanted to first share a little bit about where we are right now in the process. As Ben shared at the very beginning, we began with stakeholder input. The board did not want to rush and post a position or create a job profile until they'd heard from members of the community. So we've spent the last six weeks meeting with individuals and I'll share a little bit more about that in a moment. Our next step is now we have a job profile. It's up, it's online. And the Alma team is out there advertising and talking to as many people as we can about the role, trying to find candidates who meet the criteria that has been established through this process. After that, it will be our job to begin recruitment, recruiting and screening candidates and actually putting candidates through an interview process that's really driven by the skill sets that the community members said they cared about most. The board expects when we get to the finalist round that the community will have the opportunity to engage with finalist candidates, to meet candidates and to provide the board their input before the board makes their final decision. It's worth noting here, something that Eve Bolton shared this morning, which is that this, the board, the current board has made it a real priority that new incoming board members have the opportunity to participate fully in this process. It's, the goal here, as much as possible, is to find a candidate that all board members can feel good and get behind incoming board members as well as outgoing board members. We can move to the next slide. So I'll share a little bit about the activities that we have taken part in to gather input from the community. We held three community gatherings in each region of the city. Our focus was to help share with community members about the process and to engage in breakout group, roundtable conversations to hear from individuals and to hear their thoughts. We asked questions like, imagine the future that you see for your child, the future that Cincinnati Public Schools has prepared them for. Tell us what you see. Tell us what you hope for your child. We wanted to ground the conversations in family members' aspirations for their children and then ask them about the things that they saw as barriers and challenges to reaching those goals, the things that districts could be doing better to meet their goals for their children. We then asked them about their hopes for the next superintendent. So that was the level of discourse that we had, not only in those community gatherings, but also in interviews and focus groups. We met with teachers, we met with students, principals, district staff, community partners, union leaders, business leaders in the community, as many different people as we could sit down with to allow for deeper discussions from their unique role and their unique perspective, their vantage point of the school system. And finally, we issued a staff and community survey. It went out on October 25th. We had it open initially and then we extended the deadline for a week to maximize participation as much as possible. We can move on to the next slide. So to share a little bit about what has occurred over the course of this time, we've been able to engage in 40 different meetings. We've met individually with 234 participants across all of these different meetings and gatherings and heard from each of them personally. If you move on to the next slide, I'll share a little bit about the survey. Thank you. So our survey had just shy of 3,600 survey responses. And that included an additional 1,051 survey responses that came in after we extended the deadline. And I think the next slide is a little bit more clear on some of the demographic pieces there. So if we can move on to the next slide. If we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So we had, we were very pleased with the participation in the survey. Our top three groups represent 81% of respondents. Over half of the respondents were parents or family caregivers or caregivers of students in CPS. 21% of respondents were teachers and 9% of respondents were students. When we looked at the data, we saw that we had respondents from every single one of Cincinnati Public Schools. And 92% of principals participated in the survey. In addition, we had 224 classified staff, 166 central office staff and 110 community members that participated in the survey. We can move to the next slide, please. Nearly half of all of the participants were people of color. So we really saw strong diversity in the participation with 34% of respondents coming from the black community in Cincinnati. We can move on to the next slide. And when we looked at the ZIP codes, nearly every ZIP code in Cincinnati was represented in the survey as well. I'd like to move on to the next slide. So we really wanted to share what we've learned. You know, one of the questions that we asked in our community gatherings with individuals was, what would you want Alma to do to demonstrate to you that the time you spent with us, the things you shared with us really made a difference? And one of the top things that people said was, well, we need you to come back and tell us what you heard. So we wanted to share tonight what we learned. And we want to just take a moment and acknowledge people were honest and open. They were vulnerable and candid. They were emotional at times, sharing with us their profound experiences, their hopes for the district, their hopes for the next superintendent of the district. We can move to the next slide. The thing that, you know, of course, the city is not a monolith and there are diverse points of view. But there were certain things that really emerged as strong themes across, across groupings of people, across role, across function. And the first thing that we want to say is that Cincinnati really wants a leader with an unwavering drive to do what's best for students. What we heard from community members is that they are seeking a leader who really values and seeks to understand the needs of CPS students, the schools, each unique schools and the communities that's around each of the schools. There is a great desire for communication, which I'll talk about in a moment, and collaboration and transparency. People are looking for someone who can demonstrate that they respect the cultural and racial diversity that exists in CPS that so many people are proud of. And that transparency and communication is something that parents in particular are really looking for, as well as many of the staff in the buildings. One thing that we heard was that individuals want someone who leads with empathy and not ego, someone who can elevate the voices of students, staff and families over any other political agenda. These thoughts came across clearly to us across a multitude of meetings and came across again very consistently in the survey that we launched. We can move to the next slide. You know, it's, it's a core part and it's in Cincinnati Public Schools' mission statement and on there, right next to their logo on their website. So this wasn't really a surprise, but we wanted to share that, you know, in addition to board members that emphasized this with the Alma team from our very first conversations, people emphasize the need for student learning first, but they partner that with a desire to really think about the whole student and serve students holistically. And so I want to talk a little bit about what we heard from family members and from parents. When we asked them to imagine who their student was in the future, they talked about wanting their children to be, to grow up as critical, independent thinkers, people who know that they're valuable to society and people who are ready to contribute and to make a positive impact. Parents, staff talked about accelerating learning and growth for students and to really take the lessons learned from the pandemic in order to, to continue to innovate and improve in the school system. And we also heard from students in particular, a desire for schools to foster and for leaders as for the next superintendent to foster a commitment to caring for and belonging to a diverse cultural community. When we thought, when we talked about the holistic support for students and frankly for staff too, people really talked about a great priority to provide the resources needed to support mental health and wellbeing for students and to provide environments where students feel safe, where they know who they can talk to and where they feel cared for as whole people. And finally, there was a lot of conversation about site-based leadership of schools and really wanting the district to support site-based leadership, to allocate resources equitably and provide proactive development and support to staff. We can move to the next slide. So here I want to share some of the things that we heard, the challenges that were shared by multiple stakeholder groups. And these are things that are important for the incoming superintendent to be aware of, that these are the perceptions in the community and these are the things that people will need to be able to address. I'm getting a message that there's a problem with my network, so I'm wanting to make sure everyone can still hear me.
Sounds great.
Okay, great. Then I will keep talking. Thanks. Okay, great. Then I will keep talking. Thanks. So, you know, first of all, there is a common sentiment in the community that decisions feel top-down at times and that at times it feels, at the school level, at the community level, that leaders are prioritizing politics and power over students and staff. We heard from people a sense of broken trust and at times a feeling of lack of honest communication and not clear accountability. And we heard from many people, both in the surveys and in our conversations, real concern about operational deficiencies. People discuss transportation, food, and safety as top operational issues that they felt were not meeting schools' needs. And people talked about what they described as out-of-touch leadership. Really what they meant and what they were saying is that people feel unheard and undervalued. And what this says for us, for the Alma team, is that what the community is saying is that the skill set around open lines of communication are going to be really important and to know that community members are feeling this way right now, that this is something that is a priority for the superintendent to be able to acknowledge and address. I want to share a little bit about equity and anti-racism. We know that the district has passed, as my understanding is, the first anti-racism policy in the state of Ohio. We heard echoed among CPS students and staff strong support for the district's goals for equity and anti-racism. But this is a difficult and polarizing topic. And we see, based on the survey respondents, that there is a clear need for greater understanding about the policies and practices that impact equity and that the next superintendent should be someone who can really navigate difficult conversations around matters of race and racial equity. We'll move to the next slide, please. We want to share that people really are invested in seeing CPS succeed. We saw over 2,300 open-ended responses. People really taking the time to write down their thoughts, to share their suggestions, to add their voice to this process. And if we move to the next slide, please. There was one idea above all that came through in many of those comments, and it's this desire for partnership and collaboration. There are three things that were said over and over again in the surveys and in our focus groups. People are looking for a leader who will be visible. Visible was a common phrase, a common word. Visible and present in the community and in the schools. And people desire a sense of open lines of communication, feedback loop, and responsiveness to parent concerns. We can move to the next slide, please. I wanted to share that in this presentation, there is an appendix. I'm not going to talk through the appendix, but it has been shared as part of the materials for tonight. And what we've done is we've outlined the five to seven themes from every single one of those questions that we asked during those community gatherings. So they're there. They're intended to be unfiltered. And we welcome and invite anyone to look at those as well. But as I wrap up my presentation here tonight, I wanted to share back with the community how your input will support the process. The community input is the driving force behind the job profile. So as you read the job profile, the job posting that's out there, you should see reflected many of the ideas that I shared this evening. We use the input from the community to work with the board to clarify the competencies. Those are the skills that are most necessary for the role. And every aspect of our search process is designed to screen for those skills. It is the most important way that we mitigate bias in the process. First, by ensuring that the entire board is in agreement with those skills right from the start. And then developing interview steps where candidates have the opportunity to truly demonstrate those skills. We use the input from the community to clarify those skills and then to design a process that really is measuring those skills. And finally, the board has made it clear, when we get to the finalist stage, they want to have the community participate. They want to have the opportunity for authentic engagement, for community members to get to meet with finalists and to be able to provide their input to inform the board's final decision. I have one more slide. If we can go to the next slide. I wanted to preview for everyone the key highlights of what emerged in the job profile. We think of the job in terms of the responsibilities needed and the skills needed. So if the responsibilities are what the superintendent does, the skills are how they do their job. It's what's needed in order to do the job well. And there are five key responsibilities that have emerged from this process. The first is the need to foster an intentionally inclusive and diverse school system, supporting the whole student for strong academic growth and achievement. The second is strengthening relationships and building trust. The third key responsibility is developing a clear strategy. The district strategic plan will expire at the end of this school year. So the next superintendent will need to collaborate with community to create the next strategic plan and vision for the future for the district in partnership with the board. The superintendent will need to support a thriving workforce. That means recruiting, engaging, inspiring, retaining, developing staff and creating the conditions where staff can do their best work on behalf of the students that they serve. And finally, the superintendent will lead effective systems and operations. In terms of the skills needed, we have first, student-centered decision-making. That means that every decision the superintendent makes is centered in what is best for students. The second is this commitment to equity. Third is innovative and inspirational leadership. Fourth is effective relationship building and communication. And that includes with community partners. It includes across all schools, with all stakeholders, with families, with union leadership, and of course, with the board. And finally, extraordinary team leadership and management. So these are the skills that we will be looking for. As we are looking at potential candidates, we're looking for proven track record for those responsibilities and demonstration that they have been able to, in the past, carry out the things that are evidence of each of these skills. We've detailed it all in the job posting, which is available on Alma's website, We encourage everyone to visit. Our lines of communication remain open. We are regularly updating the Cincinnati Public Schools' website. So people can continue to check back on our progress throughout this process and are welcome to reach out to the Alma team anytime with any questions, comments, or feedback. And with that, I'll turn it over back to the board.
Okay, thank you, Monica. And I'm going to ask Ben and/or Eve for any final comments or do we want to open up for any discussion?
I just have one comment. And that is that throughout this whole process that began in June, I am thrilled that the board has shown great unity and consensus about what to do. And I'm also thrilled having gone through this, maybe not as many times as Mrs. Bates has gone through this superintendent search, but I cannot tell you how pleased I am with the search group, the Alma Advisory Group. I just think it's, as we try to pursue excellence, they really are our roadmap. So I'm very, very pleased and very supportive of this group and so proud of the board as we've gone through this.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just want to add, it was a great, very comprehensive presentation, Monica. I did owe Ms. Bolton's comment. And I also want to acknowledge that the three incoming board members are here. So they heard the presentation as well. So we were very grateful that they decided to stay. It shows a level of commitment. They're ready and willing. And so just wanted to take that moment. But anything else then from board members around the presentation before we move on? Okay, well, Monica, we thank you and we will see you soon, next week, right?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you so much. I just want to say thank you for the time and the thoughtfulness you've put into this process. It's an extraordinary partnership and the Alma team is honored to be on this journey with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on fairly quickly. And Mr. Morosky, discussion of the resolution on the policy?
There should not be a resolution.
I was wondering about that. Okay.
I just noticed it. And there's not.
Okay.
Okay, good. No, we put the vaccine requirement policy, and by we, I mean Ms. Bolton, Mr. Lindy, myself, we all were in agreement that it should be on the board agenda, full board agenda for discussion because we really haven't talked about it. We've talked about it at two committee meetings. We'll talk about it again on Thursday at 9:00 AM, which is our, we're not meeting on Thanksgiving, even though I suggested Mr. Hoying make us turkey and we meet on Thanksgiving, but nobody liked the idea sent me. So we're going to meet on the 18th, which is a few days away. And so this would just be instructive, I think, for us not to speak for my committee members to hear what everybody else on the board thinks. And so as promised during the presentation minutes, which I just sort of like flew through, just give a little background of what was discussed. It was a very robust, very good discussion. And also for the edification of the public, there's a decent amount watching, it looks like. Well, we started with a 30-minute Q and A with the doctor of Pediatric Infectious Disease and Control from Cincinnati Children's. We asked him a number of questions and I'll just sort of hit the high level. And then again, my colleagues and we discuss can fill in gaps that I miss. But sort of the things that I sort of called out to present is to set the stage for this discussion. Dr. Shafson talks about the pros and cons of the vaccine. He reported the pros for that the vaccine is safe and effective and more superior to vaccines that have been licensed for years in terms of efficacy and safety. He highlighted the Pfizer vaccine is highly effective. He reported as more people get vaccinated, community immunity will grow larger and the increase of the likelihood of getting virus under control. He informed that precautions are put in place, but there's still limits, of course, deficits and potential harms with the precaution in the vaccine. With that risk benefit, the doctor stated he would still recommend the vaccination. Obviously, he did not give a recommendation on the policy because Mr. Lindy asked him to and he's like, no, thank you. I will not be doing that. In reference to the cons, he stated he would need to know the percentage of students being vaccinated at schools in order to see if there would be an impact in population immunity. A few more that I'll highlight, I promise. I won't read it all. It's going to be good stage setting. He had referenced that if people are not, you know, when we talked about the cons, if people are not ready to accept the requirement, the pushback, of course, could be significant. I'll let Ms. Bolton speak for herself, but I know this was one of her concerns, both leaving the district and being careful about when we wield our authority. He also informed us that, again, he could not tell us what to do regarding an actual policy around vaccinating students. He recommended to do the steps necessary to accommodate as many as possible. Mr. Lindy asked about the possibility of creating a policy mandating the wearing of a mask if the choice is not to get vaccinated. He stated, the doctor stated, taking the vaccine is not a pass to stop wearing the mask and recommended continue wearing masks until we have control of the virus. And then lastly, committee members expressed their opinions and concerns about mandating or not mandating. Concerns include students needing to be vaccinated to attend CPS, the risk of families leaving the district, supporting students wearing masks then being vaccinated, high-contact sports requiring vaccination, and athletic directors, supportable athletes and coaches being vaccinated. A couple actions were taken. We asked for further follow-up on vaccination requirements for specific groups. What might that look like as opposed to the overarching policy? What would it look like to have vaccination requirement for extracurricular, close-contact sports and special needs population? And I'll let board members talk about that, that were proponents of it. Another action was that we would discuss this at today's meeting, which we're doing now, and that we would seek parent feedback, which hopefully we can get an update on, like when we may be able to see some of that from administration. And then on November 18th, we will revisit this discussion. I would assume largely influenced by what we talk about now.
Okay, so you wanted Ms. Bolton to add something?
Well, I'm just looking for what people think. I mean, we've talked about it a few times, but we've never really, we felt it was important to give the four who are not in the committee an opportunity to say something about it if they wanted to. Because it's going to influence.
So the question for board is, do folks have questions or comments just with the presentation that Mike given about the work of the policy committee and where things are now? Go ahead, Ms. Bates.
I appreciate the work. I think that this is a good basis as we follow the approval of the vaccination program. So, you know, instead of starting from scratch in six months or nine months or a year, you're laying some groundwork and doing some really good research to build on. So as we know, there will be changes that a lot of the work will already be, you know, under our feet. And you'll be ready to go with a policy as the environment changes and vaccines get approved for very young people.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Lindy?
I was hesitant to go, President Jones, because I was in the meeting. Is it okay if I go? Anyway?
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Morosky, one of the things that came back, I don't know if you got a chance to see it yet or not with the results from that POSAP survey. Did you see, did other people get those? Am I the only one who got those?
Yes, I was going to ask that question.
Okay, so I'll forward them to you again, just to make sure you got them. But I was, other people, it was pretty clear from those results that this is not something that even close to a majority of parents are supporting. And I'm trying to make meaning of that myself. I think I shared, my kind of cast me, I think, accurately as like a middle position being like in U. And I signed my son up to take it to next week to get vaccinated. I think everybody should. But I do have great cause about requiring something that's such a clear majority of parents, at least based on that information, don't support. I think that, you know, things we could revisit, just as I read it, the way the question was worded, it just said a requirement for vaccines. You know, and I think there's, I would advocate something like we did for teachers. You know, it said like either you can have a vaccine or there's some alternative. I don't know if that's testing or if that's continued wearing of a mask, once we don't have to wear masks anymore. I'm not sure. But I did want to at least give airtime to the fact that there were some pretty striking numbers, I thought. And the last thing I wanted to say on this was, you know, one argument that I did find compelling on the pro-vaccine requirement side was, if it's true that kids are needing to quarantine at home a lot, they're missing instruction. And that's a real challenge, given how much ground we're trying to make up. The thing I didn't know the answer to was how many kids are actually being quarantined at home? And so one, one request I wanted to make for the future, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, it doesn't even have to be next meeting, but at some point in the next couple of weeks, could we get some kind of numbers on, like how, how much home quarantine is happening and how big a problem is that or isn't it? And should, should we be trying to take a posture of trying to convince the community to be in this with us? Or should, should we really back off, off of this kind of plan?
Yeah. And if I, I'm going to insert my comment next, because I always forget, I always go laughing and I forget. I, I, I think it's great for us to have this kind of conversation now and continue with it. I think this is very different and I think everybody knows that. And, you know, because it, it's kids, we don't want, we're not kicking kids out of school. While, while I want all of our kids to be safe and vaccinated, because that's my personal value system, we're not dealing with kids, really, we're dealing with parents and, and their desires around it. I think there's something to be said, and maybe we can look at how we might support those who want it by offering venues to get it or direct them in the right place or thinking about incentives or something like that. And the, the one area, though, that I am most concerned is around some of the extracurriculars, where I saw some data that suggested that we had high numbers of quarantine for our athletes. And, you know, extracurriculars are a privilege, they're not necessarily required, they're a privilege. And so we may want to think, is there anything different about that or should we be doing something about that? But I really appreciate you bringing it up now so that we can just stay on top of it. And, and I do agree with Mr. Lindy that we need to look at that positive data, because it was very telling.
Yeah, and I, I found that document Mr. Lindy was talking about, and he's right. I mean, the number is 66% of all respondents did not support student vaccination. 34 did, and that's out of 6,083 respondents or 26.9% of the people who sent to. And notably, 48.2% from non-title one schools said they did support it. 51.8% is families from non-title, or, yeah, I got that right. 76.5% said no from title schools.
Yeah, okay, so lots of stuff to think about. Ms. Bowers and then Mr. Mest.
Yes, thank you, President Jones, and thank you, Board Member Morowski, for even coming back and wanting to hear this feedback from the entire board. And for me, just thinking about what President Jones said, it is a parent conversation, even though we're talking about our kids. And the, and it looked different to me, and I think I was asked this question before, and I said, I would really have to see what that all entails. As we gave teachers options in our vaccination requirement, it's not a mandate, it was a requirement policy. We gave them options of either being vaccinated or having weekly testing. If we are following, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe, of Board Member Morowski, you said it'd be the same alignment for the children or students, the same type of vaccine requirement. As a public school, how do we go about if this was to go into play? How would you go about the options for parents? The undue burden that would cause them if they choose not to vaccinate? Would it be their responsibility to do the testing if it's parallel to the adults, which is an undue burden? And then we talked about sports, it rolls back to not just high school sports and extracurricular. We have AAA pathway in elementary schools. So that will affect all of our kids and all of our raised, even if we did the requirement as a privilege, you know, extracurriculars are a privilege, but we push that we want them to do more hard, we want them to do more extracurricular activities. So that will also be an undue burden for the vaccine requirement. It's not a mandate. We have a policy for vaccine requirement, which gives families and, and adults choice. So how at the public school, because we have already said we're not kicking kids out? So how do we accommodate that? Do we offer testing at the school and we mandate if they don't get vaccinated? Probably not. So those would be some of the concerns that I would have as a board member deciding on something like this.
And those came up in the committee. And to answer your question directly, the way the policy is currently written is it does mirror the faculty and co-located partners. So at present, yes, it says it's on family to figure it out. So if it were to pass, which doesn't seem, quite frankly, very likely at this point, which is good, you know, fine. Yeah, I mean, there would be a world of kids you make them more accessible, because it would be an undue burden on, on a lot of families. Again, I think Ms. Bolton brought up points similar to this or exactly like this in the meeting. So, but yeah, that's currently the policy mirrors in many ways the other one.
Mr. Mest?
Thank you. I think on this topic and most topics, it's hard to argue with engagement data. And I think, you know, it's very clear that our families spoke loudly in their opposition for a mandated vaccine. But I think there are a lot of parents that perhaps are like me, maybe like, I think Mr. Lindy talked. My daughter turns five on Wednesday and the middle two have their appointment that day to get it done. We want that. It's just, I don't feel like I would mandate that for others. So I'm, I was actually going to say exactly what President Jones said, which is, I do think there are a lot of families who have a lot of questions, because it has been confusing. And I think in educational campaign, 6:00 AM at the gym this morning, there's an editorial that said, "We're not trying to push the vaccine on children. We want to make sure that you have access to the information, because people are confused." And they put up a QR code. And then they kept saying, "We're not asking you to do this, but we also want to make sure you have access to the information." And I think getting that information, and then if we could have sites available, because it's not easy to find the places that will actually do it. And so I think a well-thought-out communication plan to educate our families and make sure we're bringing that information to them and then let them know on these dates at these schools, you can register and here's a process. I bet a lot would opt into that, just would be opposed to mandating.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, and I think as Chairman Morowski mentioned, we put this on the agenda because we wanted to have our fellow board members participate and give us guidance before we go back into committee. So this has been helpful. I just, coming to terms with this, I think, I, I just don't believe this is our role. This is, this is, to me, as a person that does not have children, and I'm the only one here that doesn't, I, I hold a parent's role as, that was saying, that they're children. So having said that, I think that we should do everything we can possibly do to facilitate as many of our children getting vaccinated. I think, too, it was our role to insist that employees be vaccinated so that we could keep our schools open. I think Mr. Lindy raises an important topic about how many kids might be losing instructional time because they're not. I think that's something to think about. I think still on the table for me is whether or not extracurricular folks or even some of the special needs kids, whether it's just close contact or what have you. I think that's still something to talk about. But I don't think the data proves to us that schools remain open if the kids are vaccinated. But we did know that we had to shut down any number of times last year because our employees were not vaccinated. And so I would encourage us to keep talking about this. That it took us several months to get where we needed to get. But I, I do think that it clearly is not our role. And most of the vaccination issues have, I think, Ms. Bates has pointed this out, a number of cons. Those are state laws, not necessarily individual school board policies. And then finally, I think what we really need to do is stay the course on what we prioritize right now in the district and, and have this discussion, but not get dissuaded from what we really must do. And I think by doing this, we might reduce the number of kids that are in or families that are in CPS. I do think that might happen, although other people said it will increase it. But I also think that if we were getting, to get embroiled in this discussion much further than open discussion, I think that we might make, how shall I say? Bring out passions that we really don't need necessarily participate.
Bring out passions, I like that.
So we've got, we've got, there's nothing more important than a child's health, but that's up to the parents to figure that out.
Yeah. So, Mr. Morowski, I hope we've given you enough information in the chair of the policy committee that at least you all can go back and think it through some more and
Absolutely.
decide the course of action around it.
Absolutely. And I, I do, I do feel I need to give a shout out to Lieutenant Bunty and her team that are making the vaccine available for the kids for whom are eligible. That, that work is happening. And so folks that don't know that, we, it, it, it is happening. We'll continue to make it happen. So we'll, we'll talk about this again on Thursday, you know, look at the, you know, the other options. And to Ms. Bates' point, you know, I think it's prudent to keep this on the table, because, you know, things are changing so rapidly and CPS is leading on it. So we'll keep it on the shelf and we'll revise some stuff on Thursday and bring it back.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, moving on, and I'm, I'm going to try to move through quickly. Ms. Bolton, want to give you time for the item transportation and enrollment challenges?
Yes, and, and this is a, a quick one, I think, to get there. We mentioned earlier about how the proper maps would help us if we had more data on those proper maps that show where our kids are living and then what schools they're going to. So that's the enrollment part of it, because you need a fair reading of how many kids we are needing to transport and a fair reading as to which of our schools are under-enrolled or over-enrolled or what have you. That's the enrollment part. The, the transportation part, we've not dealt with, and it's a pretty specific one. And that was, and I, it might turn into an assignment, and I, I, I think it will. But on November 5th, and our communications people and our transportation people are aware of it, on November 5th, Metro Sorta released a press comp, released a press release. And that press release had several paragraphs in it. But two things that were said in it particularly were disturbing to me. One, they said that we had not, as a district, communicated with them about certain things. And this would have been since we asked the administration, and I think they did this, to make the public records request. And also, the letter was sent to, I guess, the, the Chair of the Board of Sorta. And after that, they're saying we are not communicating to them, and this is a press release. And two, they've actually stated in this press release that through everybody's effort, we have now, according to ridership, a direct quote from the press release, "According to ridership data, CPS student ridership on metro services, service, has stabilized to pre-pandemic numbers with approximately 9,000 student trips each day." Now, that's a spin, because people are thinking that's 9,000 students, which we know clearly is not the case. That's trips. And so my point is, I would think that we need to look at this press release, see where we diverge from what they're saying, and make sure that indeed they know we've communicated to them and have made even a public records request and a formal letter to their board chair, which apparently they don't know. And then I think we've got to find out more numbers, even if we have to have a more historic view of the numbers. And I think we've talked about that any number of times, and I know you guys have worked on it and we have it. But I'm now concerned about the numbers that were pre-pandemic as to how they were counting how many of our kids are riding or not riding, or what a trip is versus a student pass. I, I think that we're being perhaps outcommunicated in this matter. Because again, this, some of this is just not true.
Okay. Any reactions, comments? You may want to make this an assignment so that we can follow up. Ms. Lindy?
I just, I don't know how many folks have watched 30 Rock when it was on. There's the scene where Jack Donaghy's character goes to Washington DC and is talking to Alec Baldwin. And there's a scene where there's a leak in the roof and it's hitting like Alec Baldwin on the head or somebody. I think there's a leak in the roof. And he says, "No, there's no leak, there's no leak." He said, "No, I, I'm watching it, it's like leaking right now." He says, "No, no, we did a study, there's no leak going on." You know, like that, that's what this feels like a little bit to me, you know? Where there's a, there's, and, and it's, I, I find so helpful the reporting and the surveys that the administration put together for the community as a whole, because I think it says there's actually a very, very different story happening for families. And I just wanted to echo my support for wanting to be clear about that.
Other comments? So I, I would suggest you make it as an assignment, let us look at the, read the, at the press release. I think in your last comment was you thought that we were being outcommunicated. There may be something, maybe we need to relook our strategy. I mean, if they're putting this stuff out, maybe, because one of the things that I know and have appreciated is that we, we are now getting data that makes sense to us. You know, wouldn't be a bad idea to just show up at their public meetings with our data and share this publicly. I mean, we got to think of ways to, you know, respond, I will say. Or not necessarily respond, but just to share information with them about what we know and it's legitimate data. I don't know, I'm just talking off the top of my head, but, but I, I think there are ways to strategize around it in a positive way.
I agree, and I think it's not that we haven't done a good job.
Right.
We, every day, every committee group, every, we talk about it, but we're doing, we're doing this work in public and their Sorta Board is not. And they have found an easier way, I guess, to express what, what they're doing or not doing than us who try to do the people's business in public.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. And, you know, again, you might want to make that an assignment and we'll just take the next step from here. Okay, so the fourth item has been withdrawn to a different, another time. So we're going to move on fairly quickly. We are now at the item on the agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the, hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if, if needed. Once a request to speak is then granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district or school community, your topic and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel item. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. How many?
10 speakers.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Karen Imbus, followed by Michelle Dillingham, followed by Winona Raul. Go ahead, Ms. Imbus.
Good evening. My name is Karen Imbus and I am a field representative for the Cincinnati Federation of Teachers. Teachers are justifiably afraid of retaliation should they address the school board during the hearing of the public. So on their behalf, I am sharing their grave concerns about the district's new bi-weekly assessments. We have heard from hundreds of teachers who are outraged about this new time-consuming top-down mandate. And I want to be perfectly clear about this. Teachers do not object to the mandate and the, the canned bi-weekly assessments, because it's a hard thing for teachers to do. uh, and the, the canned bi-weekly assessments because it's a hard thing for teachers to do. No, it would be easy for teachers to comply with the directive. The reason teachers are outraged about the bi-weekly assessments is because they are a waste of precious instructional time and teachers care about students. The most important role of CPS leadership is to make sure that every classroom, every day, is led by a highly qualified teacher. But what we have seen this year, when we all knew that COVID would cause higher teacher absent rates, is that the district has utterly failed its basic responsibility, leaving dozens of classrooms each day without qualified substitutes. There are 165 teaching vacancies in the district. We've filed numerous grievances for class size violations, the lack of overload paras, the fact that there are not paras for specialized units, and that one-on-one paras are diverted to cover other roles. Many intervention specialist caseloads exceed the limits established by state law. Properly staffing schools would have a much bigger impact on student growth than these poorly constructed bi-weekly assessments, which appear to be designed to justify a new layer of bureaucracy. Instead of burning teachers out with useless top-down assessment mandates, the district leadership should send central office administrators to the schools, help provide the direct instruction that does impact student achievement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Dillingham, followed by Winona Oliver, followed by Kendra Phelps. Go ahead, Ms. Dillingham.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michelle Dillingham. I work at CFT. And I'm testifying on bi-weekly assessments on behalf of our members to protect them from retaliation. High-stakes assessments are defined as any assessment activity that is used for accountability purposes. And we reject the use of these because they have no positive benefit for our students. Our teachers know this because they are the experts from their years of training and classroom experience. It is shameful that this district is lapsing back to an era of no child left behind, where test and drill prep of our children caused so much damage, where educators and parents fought back against teaching to the test that only enriched multinational testing companies like Savvas and Pearson to the detriment of our children in our public schools. We've known this for years. We've been fighting this for years, that high-stakes testing does not give an accurate picture of educational quality and that they have been used to further defund and shut down our schools and to de-professionalize and privatize the teaching profession. Our kids are already undergoing significant testing. So let's be clear, this is not really about supporting students. This is and has always been about trying to blame teachers for a system that continues to fail our children. A math teacher crunched the numbers and these added tests will take up to 19% of their total precious instructional time just to make sure teachers are doing their jobs. This is a slap in the face and is unfair to our district's children and their parents who entrust us with their children's education. And it's also, by the way, great way to ensure that they won't be grade level ready. Our teachers are standing up for our students and parents and refusing to participate in what amounts to data collection for this Pearson company Savvas. We refuse to return to the mistakes of the past, over-testing our children in urban districts so testing companies can make billions of dollars and profits in the name of accountability. Our public testimony to you is our last resort. We need you to intervene to stop.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dillingham.
Thank you, Ms. Dillingham. Our next speaker is Winona Oliver, followed by Kendra Phelps, followed by Edward Alley. Go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
Can you see me? Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Dr. Winona Oliver. I would like to shed some light on the impact the two-week cycle assessments could have on students with disabilities and English language learners. Most of these students get extended time when taking assessments. Though the administration says the two-week cycle assessments take only five to 15 minutes, some assessments take an entire class period. For the typical general ed student, that would mean missing two days of instruction per core content area each month. For students with disabilities and ESL students who have extended time for assessment, which usually time and a half or double time, this could mean missing up to four days of instruction per content area each month. Most of these students are not performing on grade level and actually need more instruction, not less. By the time they return to the classroom after the extended time of testing period, the general ed teacher has already continued the classroom instruction. So now the student with disability or ESL student is more behind than they were when they left for testing. This will happen every other week, making it impossible for them to improve or more likely their deficit will continue to get worse since they will be missing instruction every other week in all content areas due to the time taken away from instructional time. More instruction is needed for these students to aid in academic recovery, not more in testing. In addition, the administration says that it's all right for students to continually fail the assessment. I beg to differ. Many of these students already have very low self-esteem and now could possibly fail multiple assessments every other week. For a social emotional perspective, this is just too much. Teachers are asking for flexibility as it pertains to two-week cycle assessments. They know the individual needs of their students much better than the district administrators. Please give them the flexibility to do what is best for their students in regards to the two-week cycled assessments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kendra Phelps, followed by Ed, Edward Alley. Oh, Kendra, your tone's up.
Good evening, board members. My, my name is Kendra Phelps. I am a CPS graduate, a parent, a teacher leader with CFT and a taxpayer. I'm speaking based on the feedback that I received from the CPS curriculum councils, which are comprised of teacher leaders throughout the district. We are asking that teachers be given flexibility to use the di- district two-week cycle assessments in a way that provides teachers with data they can use to inform their instruction and also doesn't rob students of critical, um, instructional time. This current mandate to test every student in every subject every two weeks, quite frankly, is testing abuse. As a parent, I sent my child back in person during a pandemic so he can have rich, meaningful learning experiences, not to be tested constantly. The curriculum councils have presented resolutions to the interim superintendent and her team about the, that exposes the inadequacies of these assessments. The negative impact it's having on students' self-esteem and their motivation to learn. However, it seems that there's more commitment to top-down mandates instead of collaborating with principals and teachers who are doing the real work. Every educator knows that when several students experience difficulty with an assignment, it's not the students that's the problem. It's the assignment that needs to be rethought. We are asking that you rethink this mandate to t- test every student, every subject, every two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Alley, followed by Christina Logan, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead, Mr. Alley.
Great. Thank you. Uh, my name is Ed Alley. I'm a parent of two boys at Walnut Hills High School. I want to thank the board and the staff and administration for your service in this difficult time to keep our kids learning and safe. However, I'm one of the parents in that positive study that said no, part of the 66%. Uh, I wanted to share my thoughts, uh, on my opposition to this possible mandate for COVID vaccines for eligible students. I'm not anti-vaccine. I'm Team Pfizer. Uh, my boys are vaccinated. My wife is vaccinated. And I believe that vaccines are a powerful and effective tool in addressing this pandemic. But I don't believe it's the place of the school district or the school board to mandate the vaccine. This decision should be the parents or legal guardians of those minors. I advise all, all parents to vaccinate their student or vaccinate their children. But I understand that there are many who are really concerned about it, not due to vaccine conspiracy theories, but just due to normal parental worry. The Kaiser Family Foundation recently found that 54% of parents have not had their eligible student, eligible children vaccinated. Of those, 76% feel it's just because there's not enough long-term data. Thirty, 53% of parents worry that their authority will be taken away from them, that their children will be mandated to take a vaccine that they are worried about, even though we know there's rigorous safety data out there. It's because of this safety data that we know that there is a small risk of myocarditis. The CDC, as of November 10th, has found 1,013 cases, uh, among people who are 12 to 29 years of age. We know that, uh, the UK and Taiwan have pumped the brakes on that second dose of Pfizer for those, uh, those children in that age range. The vaccine, there's a bigger risk with myocarditis from catching COVID. But is it the school board's place to take that risk for these students? It's the parents' risk. That's the one that should be taken. Additionally, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Alley. Our next speaker is Scott Logan, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by Danita Parrish. Go ahead, Mr. Logan.
Yeah. Good evening. Uh, thank you for letting me, uh, speak. I'm a Cincinnati resident and parent. Um, I wanted to share my concerns about the COVID shot.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Um, I wanted to share my concerns about the, uh, COVID shots for students. And I do appreciate the direction you've, um, you've moved this evening on that. Uh, realize that, that these shots are an entirely new technology, fundamentally different than traditional vaccines. And the pharmaceutical companies are making a lot of money and paying that forward, um, to their partners in the medical community and also the media and government and ads and lobbying. CDC, uh, has an interest in perpetuating that relationship. In fact, in, uh, September, the CDC actually changed their definition of vaccine and vaccination. Why? To exclude immunization as the purpose vaccine, literally moving the goalposts to, uh, to a, um, for the traditional purpose of a vaccine. The CDC's own, CDC's own, uh, vaccine adverse event reporting system, VAERS, uh, which is also known to under-report, um, has already logged over 8,000 deaths uh, and over 600,000 adverse events in the US, uh, including young people. You can look it up. Uh, you can read the specifics on those cases, and this is not acceptable. For children, the chances of injury and death from these shots, uh, far exceed that of the virus itself, from what I understand. And in, in my view, no child should get these shots, much less should they be mandated. Previously infected are known to have actual full robust immunity from COVID, uh, and no evidence of infection. Perhaps half the district already has this. Uh, like I said, the shots aren't even for immunization per the CDC. Why would, why in the world would you mandate them for district children? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Danita Parrish, followed by CFT President Julie Song. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi. Hi. Um, I'm Ruth DeBono. I'm a student at Walnut Hills High School, and I am a member of the Young Activists Coalition. Um, so it's been, you know, it's going back to normal, but it's still new and different interests for everyone. But the importance of protecting Black, Brown and disabled students in schools has not changed. As conversations surrounding SROs and school discipline have continued, there have been many questions about the legitimacy and veracity of the data presented by us, the Young Activists Coalition and the ACLU. Despite all of our data, data coming directly from either the civil rights data collection, which is data reported directly from CPS or from a public records request made from CPD. Um, we have sent the, that, that data directly to board members. And we know that, um, the person we're working with at the ACLU, Leanna Thompson and Daniel Hoying, have had meetings, have had a meeting. So there's no reason to continually delegitimize our data and reasoning without showing concrete reasons or to simply illegitimize our perspectives because we're children and you do not want our voices to be heard. The, uh, data selected, discussed from this health, the, the most recent health and safety meeting, as well as one in September, showed themselves that there's disparity in the near discipline on Black students and students of color and white students. So your own data, school board's own data that they presented in the health and safety meeting also shows exactly what we've been saying for months. Um, additionally, the goal should not be the punishing, you know, the disciplines disparate, oh, just, you know, we want it, we want it to be the same for every race. No. We want it to send punishment and inclusionary discipline and replace it with restorative and transformative justice so that eventually none of these students are being expelled for normal childhood behavior when there are other effective and non-harmful options that will allow our students to more effectively learn and grow in their schooling. They may be punished and funneled into the school-to-prison pipeline, especially for Black and Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. DeBono.
Thank you, Ms. DeBono. Our next speaker is Danita Parrish, followed by CFT President Julie Song. Go ahead, Ms. Parrish.
Thank you. I am, uh, the parent of a, of Walnut Hill students. I want to address several topics. The first, um, being the testing, um, the two-week cycle testing. I asked that the district look at this from an equity point of view, particularly looking at the amount of time it's taking away, instructional time that it's taking away from students with disability and English language learning students. And I asked that the board consistently look at the equity issues and addressing the vaccine issue and addressing the issue of school discipline and school resource office, and school resource officers. One request that I have of the board is to share what the district's plan is in terms of rolling out, um, restorative justice in the schools. That's something that has been talked about. And it would be helpful for me as a community member and as a parent to have specific information on how the board, how the school district intends to roll that out, what the timeline is for rolling that out and what to expect in terms of that. For the kids who are negatively impacted by SRAs, who are being criminalized, put into the juvenile justice system, it's a crucial issue and it's an urgent issue. So I think it would be helpful if we could have that information shared publicly in terms of what the plan is.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Uh, our last speaker is CFT President Julie Song.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of the teachers and CPS to protect them from their fear of retaliation as we work through this testing process. Um, teachers across the district are being bullied if they don't go along fully with this, um, process. And many of the tests are not valid or reliable. We have heard from teachers across the district, but mostly teachers who teach the core subjects about the testing abuse that is happening across our district, creating an educational malpractice against our students. There is becoming a tiered system for teachers, core and non-core teachers, who are, and the non-core teachers are at greater risk for termination. And that is where we have some of the greatest shortages of teachers. We are here this evening because, as you may have seen and heard at the hearing of the public at the Student Achievement Committee on Friday, November 5th, the one-size-fits-all temperature checks, which are the two-week cycle, short-cycle assessments, are not valid or reliable assessments. Teachers have been trying to address the issue with these assessments for the past six to eight weeks to no avail. The textbook companies have stated that their curriculum does not include short-cycle assessments. And what the district is using is not a reliable information or data for teachers to use as a formative assessment. As a matter of fact, I believe that there, that we have been told that the assessments are not a measure of student growth, but they are, actually they're just to monitor the teacher, teacher usage. I have examples from every grade level showing the inappropriate levels of the assessments. Teachers need to provide instruction and administer assessments that are aligned with the status, state standards for student growth um, as they are moving forward. I understand the district's desire to accelerate learning, but the district needs to pause until teachers have the flexibility to do this right for the sake of their students. Our survey results, only 7% of teachers feel that the two-week cycle of assessments will help provide instruction that is tailored to student needs. Only 4.9% of teachers agree or strongly agree that the two-week assessments are beneficial, um, get, to getting um, get, to getting students on grade level. Number three, 94.1% of teachers feel that the temperature checks are not aligned or partially aligned to the content covered in their instruction. Most teachers feel the assessments require a significant amount of instructional time, and this loss of instructional time is not good for their students. As you can see, there are many concerns with the loss of instructional, um, time across the district. My greatest concern though is that the culture of the district is creating in the schools with the top-down mandate. The directors of schools have been meeting with principals and mandating teachers to complete assessments or be disciplined up to termination, or principals will be disciplined up to termination. Principals asked why the distance, why the district wants to run teachers away. Their response was, if teachers aren't compliant, we don't want them. Really, you don't want teachers? Principals feel that their hands are tied and they have to write teachers up, and this is not how you build a positive culture within buildings or schools. Many of you have knowledge of mental health issues. These assessments do not support the mental health or well-being of students or faculty. My concern is that teachers are becoming, um, and bordering on being burnt out from the positions of too much on their plate, they can't get it all done, and how will we return from that damage in the future? Our belief is that the administration's most important job is to make sure every child's class is taught by a qualified teacher, and the district has failed on this. We have way too many classrooms that are being taught by paras and, um, others who are not the certified teachers because we have a shortage of teachers already. Instead, they are focused on reducing teaching time and to add additional testing time. We need to trust the teachers and not the tests. Teachers need the flexibility to meet the needs of their students, to accelerate the learning of students across the district, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hold on. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Hold on. Hold on. Okay. We generally don't make statements, but this sounds like you can't.
Yeah, this is just one. Forget about the topic we just talked about. There's a word that I would just ask adults to, to really think before you use it. An employer asking their employees to do something is not bullying. We can call it lots of things. We can say we disagree, but if somebody was bullied, and ultimately that bullying landed in the intensive care unit, kids are committing suicide because they're bullied. These, this is an important word that we can't just throw out there in emotion to try to get people excited about a topic. So if we could use a different word than bullying, um, when it's not appropriate, I think it's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We made it. Okay. Ms., uh, we, uh, does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I have kudos, um, first to the superintendent, to interim superintendent and the DSL team. Um, I attended the OSBA conference in, um, Columbus, um, and I, um, they did a very good presentation, um, on the principal pipeline, as well as, uh, Ms. Vera Brooks, Director of Early Childhood Education, was a part of the Student Achievement Fair, and she represented, um, our great work that we're doing in early childhood. My second kudos, um, is actually to, uh, Josh Harden, uh, with CPS Athletics, who did a Beyond the Game, um, conference, or, or I guess Facebook Live event with, with, um, coaches and, and students, um, and some parents around, um, mental health. So I want to give kudos to Mr. Harden, interim superintendent, her team, as well as our administration.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, followed by Mr. Lindy.
Yes, I, I attended two, uh, events last week that were pretty awesome. So I want to give these two schools kudos. One was Gamble Montessori High School, uh, that hosted our, um, our meeting, the Senator Blue Blessing. And it was a great morning. Not only did, what, what was breakfast provided by, by the staff. Uh, we received a great tour, uh, a great overview of the school, two students that were exceptional, who talked about, you know, their plans for the future, and they also babysat Senator Blessing's two children, the two-year-old and the five-year-old who came that morning with him because it was his day to provide childcare. So thanks and kudos to Gamble Montessori High School. And the other fun event I attended last week was the Hyde Park Elementary Pumpkin Chuck. It was, it was a great celebration. Everybody was happy. People were, you know, very, uh, congenial. They, uh, there were, there were booths, there was a, a great bake sale, and, uh, it was just a lot of fun. So kudos to Hyde Park Elementary. Thank you, Mr. Lindy.
Thank you, President Jones. I, I possibly could have said this earlier during Ms. Bowers' staff committee notes, but I just wanted to give a little airtime and appreciation to the staff at Evanston Academy, who gave such a wonderful presentation. I learned some things in that meeting I didn't know before about what it takes to become a Blue Ribbon School of Excellence from the Department of Ed, and that there were only two schools in the entire state of Ohio. And I believe it was 2019 that earned that distinction, and that Evanston was one of them, when the school was almost entirely economic disadvantaged students and earned an A on the state report card. And I just think that's such a one, and to hear the way their team talks about that building, and what it feels like to be a staff member there or a student there. Uh, I think it is so powerful to see it here in Cincinnati Public Schools, an entire school that is writing a different story about what should be possible everywhere, uh, in, in, in school districts across the country. And I think it's remarkable, uh, and I wanted to offer some kudos and say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky.
I, along with President Jones, Ms. Bowers, and Ms. Bolton, were able to be at the Ohio School Board Association Conference, and, um, our early education team had a booth, uh, led by Ms. Vera Brooks, at the Student Achievement Fair, um, bragging about all of the good work we have done with our friends at Preschool Promise, to expand preschool opportunities and early ed throughout the city. And then our superintendent, Tiana Amat, and her team presented on principal leadership. I unfortunately was picked up by my wife and left, but I'm sure one of you can reiterate how awesome it was. Uh, but it was fun to be up there with you superintendent and with the colleagues. Um, the CPS was well represented. Um, and, uh, it's the first OSBA event I had been to. I've done a lot of the council great city schools, as y'all know. Um, that was the first official OSBA thing I went to besides training. And it was really cool. Um, people knew about us and things that we do down here. People wanted to talk about that vaccination policy. This is a kudo, I guess, to everybody now, really, all the different things we've done. The anti-racism policy came up a good bit that Alma brought up earlier, so kudos to everybody, I guess. Um, it was, it was kind of a neat environment to me, like, oh, you're CPS, you guys are doing some big things, so kudos.
All right. Um, Ms. Bates, present the retirements, please.
Yes, I have several retirements to honor this evening. Uh, they're all civil service personnel. Beverly Early, Michael Ewing, Roger Hambrun, Bernetta Johnson, Darina Phelps, Virginia Price, Diane Masters, Hubert Russell, and Lynn Sparks. So we thank these professionals for all that they've done for our students, and we wish them well in their future. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to our resolutions. We're going to run through these fairly quickly, um, with the ability to discuss if we need to. Mr. Morosky, first one.
Uh, this is Resolution 3120, uh, Resolution Amending Board Policy, uh, Employment of Professional Employees. Um, these are minor, uh, changes and a lot of, uh, language added as we do, uh, from time to time to update them with the newest state law. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Mr. Guston, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton, please present the next resolution for proof.
Yes. Uh, a resolution amending board policy 3120 dot zero four, employment of substitutes. I submit and hope for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Guston?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Thank you, President Jones. Uh, I have here amended board policy 3120.06 on selecting student teachers. Uh, I do have one question about the policy. I can, I can.
In discussion, in the minutes.
So I propose this for, uh, passage as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Lindy?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Hoying, I, I did read through the red line, and I think I just forgot or didn't write it down from policy what the, what the spirit of this change was. I, I couldn't find what the difference was on the red line, but I, I also might have missed it. I wanted to just check.
I believe it was just adding the.
Okay, we can't hear you guys.
Sorry, my mic said, uh, it was adding the background check. I just saw it in both versions. I wasn't sure that.
The, the, the second version is the same version.
That's great. So that's just my error, and I think we should vote to pass this. So, thank you.
Okay, I still don't know what you said. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I, I was, um, concerned that I couldn't follow what the difference was between the old policy and the one that's proposed.
Oh, okay.
I think I was making a mistake of looking at the clean version, uh, which is why it should look just like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Point of village, real quick?
Yes.
Just so everyone knows, when we get these, so they're, they're both identical, uh, every time. The first one, if you look at a PDF, will be the corrections, and the second one's just clean for, like, storage for later on.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Guston, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Morosky, you're up again.
Right. 3120 dot oh eight. Uh, it's a resolution amending board policy 3120 dot oh eight. Employment of personnel for co-curricular or extracurricular activities. Again, um, just cleaning these up to match our actual board policy and actual practice, um, and adding language that makes us compliant with all of our state masters. I recommend passage as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Guston?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton, please present the next resolution.
Uh, I believe this is correct, uh, but I, I might be confused on it. Um, a resolution rescinding board policy 4112, board employee communication.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick.
Yes.
This is just, uh, it sounds pretty dramatic, I think. Maybe a rescinding policy about board employee communications. Just a reminder, we updated it, and we have a real, a good one that's like more 21st century and about what we do. So just for, if anyone's watching, like, we're not getting rid of our policy. Yeah, we're not rescinding.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Guston?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Mr. Lindy, please present the next resolution.
Uh, thank you, President Jones. Uh, I present a resolution rescinding board policy 4120. Uh, this was a duplicative policy, um, which, uh, this is cleanup, and I present it as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Mr. Guston?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Mr. Morosky, you're up again.
Policy committee is busy. Uh, I present a resolution, uh, rescinding board policy 4120 dot oh four, employment of substitutes. This is another, uh, another, uh, duplicative one, uh, as we've gone through and cleaned stuff up. I present it as written.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Guston?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Lastly, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. A resolution approving students eligible for subsidy reimbursement in lieu of transportation for the 2122. I submit.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Guston?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, it's been a long time since we had that many resolutions, but thank you all for your patience. Okay. Superintendent Amat, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Can you say, flag that? Thank you. We just want to start the report by saying it is American Education Week, November 15th through the 19th. So just want to say Happy Education Week, and thanks to all of our educators for their commitment to our students. We are now in the process of new science curriculum adoption. Um, and I'm happy to report that approximately over 1,000 CPS students, parents, and staff joined us at the Cincinnati Museum, uh, to look at textbooks, um, hands-on experiences. Um, and it was just a fantastic opportunity for our staff, students, and parents to, um, have hands-on materials for our science adoption. Della Park had a ribbon-cutting ceremony, uh, for their unveiling of the Innovative Learning Lab. The students will be able to build robots, design video games, and learn about circuit boards, all thanks to our partners with Verizon, Heart of America, and Arizona State University. I would echo the shout-out to Gamble Montessori, um, when they, they hosted a state Senator Bill Blessing. It was an absolutely wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our students to, uh, express their voice in their experience in schools. Um, and I thank Senator Blessing for coming out, and he also, uh, shared an innovative idea to expand our schools agriculture program with local farmers. So we're going to try to leverage that work. Huge shout-out, 2021 High School Football Playoff. Congratulations to our high school football teams, Gamble Montessori High School, Chomp Chomp, Hughes Sim High School, Go Big Red, Schroeder High School, Go Jaguars, Tab High School, We Love the Senators, Walnut Hills High School Eagles, and Withrow University Tigers. We were well represented. And lastly, I would just like to announce our job fair coming up November 18th. We are looking for power professionals, special needs power professionals, and student service, uh, assistants. The job fair will take place here at our Ed Center, two to five. That concludes my superintendent's report, along with the written report for the approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Some move.
Wow. Second. Oh, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Guston, please call roll.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
I just, I want to recuse on item E, page 15, and item E on page 16. Everything else is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
Some move.
Discussion? The troops are fading. Any discussion? No? Okay, Mr. Guston.
All right. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, are there any inquiries and updates? Okay, Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I just wanted to follow up on some of the lockdown issues we were having a couple of weeks ago. This was, there was some concerns of a number of different campuses that we just heard from different parents about, and I haven't heard anything in the last couple of weeks, but I also wanted to check, you know, how are things? How are we feeling about student safety? How should parents feel about how things are going?
We are, we are continuing to work with our school leaders and our community leaders, ensuring safety at all of our school sites. There has been a decrease in the lockdown.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Any, any other inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
Just a quick update from a meeting I attended today, part of the Growing Well Board, and they too, fantastic board, they too have had issues regarding employment and keeping people, whether it's the nurses or other health-related folks, and seeing this job fair kind of thing for our paraprofessionals, whatever, I, I was moved by some of the stuff those folks said at this board meeting and thought, and I offered a suggestion, and they kind of, I think, liked it, but might not be bad if, since we're facing the same thing virtually every other employer is facing, in almost all of our job categories, might not be bad for the superintendent to, to be thinking about, you know, including some of our partners that are manning and, and personing, if you will, our school-based health centers and our other health providers, to see if we can partner in, in more career opportu, not opportunities, but career fairs. And one of the things was that, it was said by a person I really trust greatly, Marilyn Crumpson is on that board, and Marilyn said, one of the things that first timers have that is difficult for them is that they get their masters in whatever, whether it's psych or whether it's health and what have you, is that all of a sudden they got the masters, and then you give them the full job, and that's kind of daunting. And maybe there's another way to start recruiting people in all of these job areas for a school district, but maybe a way to phase people into the employment, meaning you don't come in right away as the full person responsible for the health and safety of this kid or that kid or this whole school, but maybe there's a way to start to phase people into these really huge jobs. And, and there are actual parts of the CFP contract that actually would allow us to help recruit people, not just for teaching, but a number of other ways that there's a partnership within that contract that would be tolerated and maybe encouraged. I thought that was good, because it really does take a village or something, all the different kinds of employees we have, whether it's security or health people or paraprofessionals, whatever, maybe, or bus drivers.
Any other inquiries and updates? Okay, any assignments?
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, it probably will not be as complete as it was in the beginning, but we'd like to assign to the administration the, a review in response and a validation or lack of validation to that press release by sort of Metro. I know that Krista Boyle has already sent out the press release to the people that need to be working on it, but I, I think it would also be good to do a bit of a historic rundown of some of these numbers pre-COVID, and look and see the spin that was there, as well as the spin that has just occurred in that press release. Because one of the things, too, upsetting about that press release was that they were really questioning that we surveyed our principals. And fortunately, the superintendent maintained, no, you don't need to meet with our, our principals individually, sort of, or Metro, we will find out what our principals are thinking. And so it's, I was pleased with that, that they even said that something was wrong about us finding out things from our own principals.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other assignments? I have one. This actually, I thought I had made this assignment before, but it could just be in my head. We need to start thinking about coming back into the IOT for our, for our open meetings, public meetings, and I, I want to assign administration the duty of helping, of figuring out the space capacity as it relates to social distancing and what have you. And also, for the board, this is an assignment for us to just think about it, how we manage hearing of the public. Not asking for you to talk about that tonight, but I, I was hoping to put it on the agenda for next week, so if you could think about that, how we would handle, manage the hearing of the public piece. And so, that's it. That's the assignment. So if you could let us know. I, I mean, actually, if you could let us know by next week, that would be great, because the sooner we get back in here, I think the better off we'll be, because we should have been back. But anyway, any other assignments? Okay, having no other business, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.